Check out the results. We need.
Good night.
All right, good evening, everyone. It's six thirty. Would everyone rise with me for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to town hall this evening. Got a few matters to take care of this evening at six thirty. First and foremost, we have a public hearing for FY twenty-six municipal budget for the town of South Berwick. Then that will be followed by a board assessors meeting. The town council does also function as the board of assessors, and then we'll move into our regular council business. Before I open up the public hearing, I just want to let everyone know how we're going to run this. So first, we're here tonight to discuss the FY twenty-six municipal budget for South Berwick. I will give a brief overview of kind of what has taken place thus far to get to the budget that is being presented this evening. Then I'll ask the manager to weigh in and add anything that I may have missed or anything else he would like to share. And I know that there are several department heads here this evening that may be weighing in or available to answer questions. Then I will turn it over to the counselors. I'll ask each of us to weigh in and speak about our experience with the budget and our thoughts. And then lastly, I'll open it up to the public, anyone who would like to speak or ask any questions pertaining to the budget. I just ask when the time comes, raise your hand. I don't think we have a sign on each side, which is okay. And I'll just ask you to come to the podium, state your name, address, and you'll be given three minutes. All right, so I'll go ahead and get started and just give us a little bit of an overview of what has happened to date with the budget process. And I will just say that all of everything I'm going to speak to is very typical. This is the process that we have gone through from a budget perspective for many years now. I think we've been very consistent. So in January and February, the town manager and our department heads, they begin the work, preparing our budget. This is really, I think, the initial heavy lifting, of course, that goes into the budget, and I know that there's multiple iterations that happen in that back and forth within the town staff community. Then at that point, that budget got presented to the town council in March, and we held three different budget workshops here at town hall that were both recorded and open to the public. And at those workshops, several of the department heads did either join us or come to present as necessary. In our last council meeting on March twenty-fifth, the council voted on draft expense and revenue budgets in addition to the warrant article language in preparation for this evening where we are holding a public hearing. After this evening, the next and final step in this process will be our annual town meeting on May twentieth, held at Central School. That is a change. Will be held at Central School and the gymnasium. Doors will open at five P M. And the meeting will start at six o'clock, and that's an opportunity for residents, again, like usual, to vote on the fiscal year twenty-six budget. In our consideration, and in these three budget workshops that the council worked through, we considered a total of twelve scenarios, I will call them, in our budget decisions. And that involved kind of pulling a number of levers, and that involved deciding whether or not we were going to add and move forward with the EMS fire proposal. I highly suggest everyone pick up this really great one pager that Chief Hamel put together. He'll be speaking to this shortly. So EMS scenario was one we considered. In addition to, we played around, I guess, for lack of a better word, with considering different contributions to our capital improvement planning accounts. Those are our accounts where we're strategically setting aside money every year so that we can plan to replace police vehicles, to replace fire trucks, to replace any number of things. We played around with how much we wanted to contribute to those accounts, and again, also with how much we wanted to pull from the undesignated fund. And I think those last two, it's really important to emphasize that we did that exercise in an effort to lessen the burden on our taxpayers. Ultimately, the will of the council was to go with what we called Scenario four dash two, which involved adding an EMS fire program, which again, the one pager. We'll be sharing more on this shortly. In addition to reducing our C I P contributions by fifty percent instead of completely reducing them and utilizing one million dollars from the undesignated fund. After considering our revenue projections, this budget, Scenario four-two, as I mentioned, results in an increase of six hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars to be collected from taxpayers for a six-point-six-seven year-over-year increase. Our fiscal year twenty-six municipal expense budget sits at eleven million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. This budget includes startup costs for standing up our own EMS and fire service, which again, we will elaborate on more in addition to the first of our town hall bond payments. And again, I just want to emphasize that we did intentionally decide to reduce the C I P contribution for one year in order to lessen the burden on taxpayers with the intention of bringing that back up to full contribution future. That's very high level overview. I'll pass it over to Tim if there's anything additional you'd like to add, and I certainly would like to ask Chief Hamel to come up and speak to the EMS fire service piece. Thank you.
Is that good? Can you hear me? So to your point, you guys had asked for me to have some information ready for tonight. I thought maybe the easiest way to do this, instead of boring everyone with another proposal or presentation, was to do like a one pager that kind of overlays what's going on. Really, the problem hasn't changed since we started talking about this. We are having some issues with the coverage of our ambulance service. We're also starting to see some of the early stages of staffing issues on the fireside. Firebase E M S is a thing that's been kind of taking over a lot of these smaller communities and even larger communities because the private ambulance business just doesn't work. They rely solely on a lot of federal funding, Medicare, Medicaid. That funding is dried up. It slows, not coming, and it's certainly not covering the cost of providing a service. So that falls back on the municipality. Obviously, you have to have an ambulance. So fire departments are stepping up and filling in that void. I think that the highlights here is we would move from, you know, completely on-call fire department, plus, you know, myself during the day, to a staffed fire department twenty-four seven who runs fire and EMS. So you'll have somebody on duty, two people on duty, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, ready to respond whenever necessary. There's a substantial upfront cost. We're aware of that. So you'll see on the bottom here, it outlines the undesigned L A for, you know, kind of the one-time expenses and what the operating budget would look like. If you can live with year one and survive through year two from year three forward, it's the most stable solution, right? Because we can control our costs, we can control how we operate, and it'll level out and offset some of that with some of the billing that comes in. Nothing else here. I guess I'd close with, you know, we would look to take over July first, twenty twenty-six. So there's only a few months of full-time salary in this budget. The next budget would have a full year, but we're also paying the full ambulance contract this year. So you'd have some offset there. We would not be paying that in twenty twenty-seven. So we take them on probably in the spring of twenty-six. We cut over July one of twenty-six, and then we'd be on our own operating as a fire and rescue department.
Okay. For the public's benefit, could I, I'd like to ask the chief, if you go down through your F A Qs and read them and read your answer.
Sure. So we have some questions on this, so I put together a quick kind of Q and A on the back page here. First question is, why don't we just change ambulance contractors? And the reality is, it's just that there are not many non-municipal ambulance contractors left. I mean, twenty years ago, there were a bunch of them that would, you know, if we put out an RFP for service, they'd be chomping at the bit to come take over this town. That just doesn't exist anymore. Why now? Why can't this wait? The problem's not going away. It's getting worse almost by the month at this point, and it's not going to be any any easier or less expensive the further we kick the can on this one. So it's unfortunately rip the Band-Aid off kind of scenario that we're all facing here. Question three, how will this improve emergency medical service? So currently, we only pay for one ambulance in town. There's two ambulances there, but one's spare. So if there's a second ambulance call, which happens pretty regularly, especially during the weekday, they call from out of town. They don't have staff for it. Under the fire plan, we would have, you know, trained responders all in town, the same, you know, men and women who answer fire calls, could grab the second ambulance, go out and handle that call. How will it improve fire department service? Well, as the department gets older and people are moving further out of the downtown, our response times have crept up a little. We still have a really good group. It just takes longer to get them assembled. So, you know, having the two people on duty on scene faster, they're fully trained. They're able to do a few things until, you know, until the cavalry comes from home. So that will help. How will we improve community engagement? We have a pretty robust fire prevention, fire safety program. We teach in the schools. We work with some of the senior groups. We do a lot of stuff out in the community. And I would foresee the medical side following suit there with, you know, education and training and first aid and all that sort of stuff. Question, will the ambulance make money? So the ambulance does bill for service. So they, you know, you get transported to the hospital, you get a bill, your insurance pays it or a portion of it. And the ambulance receives that money, or in this case, the tower receives that money. But I won't want to say this loud and clear because, and I've said it, and every time I've stood at this podium, this is not a moneymaker. Like, it'll help defray some of the costs, but it will never be a break even, and it will certainly never turn a profit. I just want everyone to understand that. Last question, how will this affect future emergency service budgets? The first two years are the toughest financially. I think we've kind of made that clear. We have contract costs because you're paying for the ambulance this year. We have startup costs, we're hiring personnel, and we have a little bit of a lag before the billing starts coming in. But you really start to see the long-term value end of year two, beginning of year three, where we've stabilized, everybody's on board, we're not paying contractors anymore, and we're receiving some of that money back. So that's where things kind of level out and, you know, makes us a sustainable plan for the future.
Thank you, Chief.
I think she could see a long question.
Yes, Bill.
Chief, you were talking about whether the ambulance will make money, and obviously you said it would not, or not even come close to a break even. With that in mind, why is that something that we would want to consider as a town?
So I think, I think that requires the change in mindset from it's a contracted service to an essential service. Because at the end of the day, your essential services, police, fire, highway, none of them are expected to make a profit, right? There is something that we provide to the citizens for living here and to keep everybody safe. And really, it's a long story as to how ambulance service ended up on the opposite end of that spectrum, but it really needs to be considered the same, same as those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Tim, is there anything else that you wanted to add before I ask the counselors to weigh in a little bit?
Yeah, so on the chief's comments and back to your kind of statement, Bill, remember municipal government's not really, we're not in the business making money. We're in the business of providing customer service, right? So the clerk's office provides customer service during the day when people want to come into R G T R C has. The police, when people are robbed or need to get a traffic stop to tell them they're going too fast. Certainly, public works, the button, when they need to foul and sand us all roads and the transfer station, right? So we charge for our bags. We charge for different fees to the transfer station. But again, we don't make money there. That's just to offset operational costs. So municipality generally aren't making money-making business. So what this comes down to is this comes down to a better quality of service for us, for our customers, by us having control of the situation. And number two, myself, and when Chief Hamel came on board, myself and Chief Hamel spent a long time projecting out five, ten, fifteen, twenty-year long-term plan of fire rescue. How is the service going to work, the sustainability, the cost, all those factors? All those were done by long-term planning by myself and Chief Hamel, who I have thirty-five years in the fire service. Chief Hamel's got thirty years. So we put all that together, and what we came up with is we didn't know when this would come, but this, we knew this was a workable solution that was coming. Because it was, it's already been done twelve times this year in other towns in the state. So we knew it was coming. We just didn't know when. Fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to get there, it's made the jump to light speed to be more effective this year. The longer we wait for this, all the other towns that are doing this will continue to do this, and this will continue. The next time we go to try this, whether it's next year, the year after, whatever, if it doesn't pass, it'll just be more expensive. But inadvertently, at some point, this is going to come to a doorstep, and we're going to have to deal with it. And to just remind everybody, this is a two-for-one, right? You're going from one individual service of EMS and the call fire department where down the road we do full-time firefighters, where this will solve that two-person problem. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to ask the council, is there anyone who would like to volunteer first?
I'll go first. I love going first. So we'll do two seconds of history and then get into where the budget is. So this is my eleventh budget that I've done with the town. I've learned a lot over eleven years of doing budgets. The last three or four have gone seamless. They're a lot easier. They're a lot straight. They're a lot easier to explain. Very straightforward, the way Tim and the staff and Jen, everybody puts it together. With that being said, there are some expenditures in this one that are going to cause people to go hump. We are looking to increase. Jay spoke, Nick spoke to it, Tim spoke to it, essential services. The three gentlemen sitting right there between both chiefs and Jay, the director of the highway department, they're responsible for keeping our community safe. That's their jobs. That's why we hired them. Since they've been in the positions they've been in, this community has gotten significantly safer on a daily basis. We're fully staffed. The roads are fantastic. Police service has been unbelievable. The traffic stops are doing a big job. People are noticing it. Fire department's out there all the time. We're always first on scene. So when we look at these costs, they are up. But again, looking at twenty-five years ago, we had three thousand people in town. We now have eight thousand people in town. Town's gotten bigger. We need to increase. We need to have these essential services for everybody to get what they need. Our ambulance service right now, York does a great job with what they have. I think we could do a lot better having our own. Back when South Burke Rescue was here, it was fantastic. You knew the people that showed up. I, for one, like, if I have to call somebody to my door, I like knowing who's at my door. Whether it's a police officer, whether it's a fire officer, fire, fireman, fireperson, or public work, going in to do something or whatever. I like knowing who the people are. That's what this town is about. And if it costs us a little more to get there, I'm willing to spend that to bring this community back together and have the best, best we can. And dollar for dollar, if you look at where the state is going with their budget and the six percent they're doing on the ambulance services, we're going to be far ahead if we do the EMS upgrade. I can't speak enough for that. So thank you to all three of you and everybody, all the other department heads for what you've done. I truly appreciate it. It makes our life easy. And again, with Nick, and then I'll stop. When we interviewed Nick, I was part of that when we interviewed Nick for the fire chief. He went over his five-year plan. This was part of his five-year plan. He's been working on that for the last three years now you've been chief. Has it been that long?
Yeah, almost three years.
Wow, okay. So for three years, Nick has been working on this. This is not a flash in the pan. This is something he's been working on. And I look at all three of these gentlemen as SMEs, my world, that's assistance matter expert in what they do. They are all experts in what they do. We are lucky to have these three gentlemen in what they represent in Nick's thirty-plus years in the fire department. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you again, gentlemen.
Thank you, John. I'm next.
So the town practices incremental budgeting, where last year's budget serves as the baseline for the next, typically with minor adjustments. Minor being the debatable word here. I'm sure to more than a few of you, you find the one point, almost three million dollar increase is not a minor increase and leaves you wondering what drain your money is going down next. Fortunately, or not so fortunately, budgets are cumbersome, they're time-consuming and confusing, and budgets are only as good as the data being used to create them and propose them. Fortunately, we have department managers and administrative staff that makes this process a lot easier for us. Numbers presented to us, graphs presented to us, presentations presented to us, left no expense questioned. Our budget this year communicates how resources are being allocated to achieve goals and meet the needs of the community. The budget is also the single most important policy document that administration prepares, council tweaks and adopts, and the citizens vote on. I hope the citizens will take the time to consider this budget and vote on accordingly.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You should get called up first. I just want to thank Tim, Ken, and all the department heads and everybody from the bottom all the way up for putting this together. This is not my eleventh. This is my first time running through the budget process. It's very easy to follow or as easy as possible to follow. I just want to go through three items on the, in the budget that account for some of this increase. The firing as behavioral health liaison and then the part-time rec position that we all voted on. When it comes to the rec department, the amount of programs and good that the rec department brings to the town, the community, senior citizens, adults, kids activities, after-school programs, all kinds of stuff is critical to what makes this town an awesome place to live, brings the community, get community together. And that's why I voted to authorize the part-time position, allow them to maintain the programs that they have and even offer up some new ones that they are looking for. The behavioral health liaison for the police department, in my mind, is absolutely critical to the town. It's a little bit of a need that we have here. It allows a certified, trained professional to recognize issues or people that are suffering and having problems that your typical police officer might not be equipped to address in the moment and then have some things off the past. Allow them to get critical services in need that they, services that they need instead of having to interact with a police officer in a moment of crisis. And so that's why I voted to bring, authorize a full-time position for the behavioral health liaison. And then, of course, the fire department and EMS, I stood here, I don't remember when it was, October, whenever we did the meet the candidates night, and I said I would never vote to reduce essential services here in town. And in my mind, voting not to bring the fire department and EMS together is tantamount to reducing essential services here in town. The service we're getting from York Ambulance is deteriorating, and it's only going to get worse if they go through their struggles. And to echo John's statement about knowing people, knowing the town, knowing the people that are showing up at your door and knowing the need, make sure that there's no laps in coverage is essential to this town, and that is an essential service. And that's why I voted to bring EMS back to South Berwick and then also get some full-time staff for fire department and cut both those. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Jeff, I can, or would you like to?
I think you guys all said it very well. I hadn't been a part of a budget season without Tim, but I did witness, you know, secondhand other budgets and the amount of, know the amount of times that you guys were in budgets and heard stories. So I can also say that I appreciate how concise it is. It's not easy to dive into. And also, you know, to the department heads, I know, you know, Tim's pushing on all you guys to, you know, tighten up and where you can and also have good numbers, good details for us. So I appreciate that. So, yeah, no, I think, you know, if you've been watching the workshops and have been following up, and you know, I'm the, I'm sort of the odd man out. I'll stand by that. And, and my message is, I feel like the point is here is not a matter of me being against departments or against pieces of the, of the town or whatever. It's more of what I'm for. And right now, I'm just mainly focused on, on our taxpayers. All that runs through my head right now is, even if we didn't change our, our assessment, if we didn't have any increase at all, if everything stayed exactly the same and would still, everybody's tax- with still, everybody's taxes are going up because your assessed value is going. Um, that's where my head is at, um. And then from there, you know, then comes in the budget and all the pieces that increase it, so. That's where my concern primarily is, not a for or against, it's primarily, uh, um, thinking through the, the impacts to the, the taxpayer right now, and then also the added impacts to adding in new, uh, employees and, and things like that, you know, it, everything has an impact, so. Um, that's where I stand, I mean, at the end of the day, um, I feel like our workshops, I feel like where we sit and where we rest now is honestly, it's putting forth the, uh, a good budget in the sense of if we're not buying Rolls Royces for, for everybody, we're not misspending, it's a matter of how much we want to spend, and that's where we kind of have that wiggle room. It's a little too far for me, but I'm not gonna sit and say it's a irrational budget. So that's, I guess, uh, my message to the, the public.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, I guess I'm last. Uh, this is, I think, my municipal budget, first off, I'm so far. Um, and every year there's something new and I'm, I'm still very much learning through that process, um, but as I mentioned before, we've had a pretty consistent, um, clear-cut process for several years. Um, I view this budget that we're discussing this evening as providing essential services for our community, continuing to do that, and as we have done in the past. I really liked Chief Hamel's, uh, mention of the mindset shift that we kind of need to make as it relates to EMS and fire service and starting to think of that as an essential service for our community. Um, I feel like the decision to stand up an EMS and fire service for this community is setting South Berwick up for success. Um, it's not without risk, and I think we're, we're addressing that, that this is not a money-making endeavor, this it, it is a, a big undertaking, but I think we have the right people involved, um, to, to help us be successful in that. Um, I really wanna express appreciation and gratitude to Chief Hamel for being proactive on this topic and for bringing this to the council, the point at which he has. Um, because I really do kind of have this feeling that I think this is a really important decision that South Berwick is making um, this year in our decision to stand up this service. Um, I also just wanna express that I think we've been incredibly fortunate in South Berwick to have the fire department that we have had for as long as we've had, um, which is largely volunteer-based, um, volunteer-based. Um, we've been so incredibly fortunate for a long time to have that, and we also have to acknowledge that that's a group of individuals who are aging out, and, um, I don't think we're gonna be able to sustain that volunteer model, um, much longer, but I'm extremely grateful for the time that we've had that. Um, I also think that, at least specifically for myself, as we were kind of playing with the different scenarios and putting together the budget, consideration of the pain on taxpayers this year absolutely was, um, at least top of mind for myself, and I think that uh, I view my responsibility as a counselor as being responsible for trying to ease the, the immediate pain on taxpayers to the extent that we can, um, without creating too much pain in the future, and I think the kind of balance that we struck with choosing to reduce our contributions to the CIP accounts a little bit this year to kind of help with that, I think was prudent, um, but I think was not, I think, had we decided to not continue to contribute to that fully, um, I, I would have had some concerns about that. I, I, I really think it's important that everyone understands that South Berwick isn't a really solid financial place and that we do have an undesignated fund that we can use to help and help manage the, the burden on taxpayers, and we have, we have a duty to be thoughtful about how we choose to do that. Um, and I think that this council absolutely was in our development of this budget. Um, I think this is a lean budget, like as Jeff said, like there's nothing fancy in this budget. Um, and I think we are consistently strategic and thoughtful and trying to think outside the box um, and how to meet the needs of this community, and I think that this budget that we've got does exactly that. That's my take. Um, I will now open it up to, well, before I do that, um, I just wanna address, um, before I open it to the public, um, we received an email a week and a half ago or so that is included in the, um, supporting docs from Representative Roberts. Um, it's, it's lengthy, so I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but it is included in our supporting docs, sharing some additional information for us to consider in the EMS fire decision. That's it. So anyone from the public that would like to speak about the budget?
Madam Chair. Can I say one more thing?
Yes, absolutely.
So could you please all tell all your friends, neighbors, everybody that's gonna show up to our town meeting in May? Um, a lot of thought was put into this, and we're trying, again, to be fiscally responsible, but we don't wanna be short-sighted. We don't wanna end up where we ended up with the town hall, where we had to do so much work because for so many years we passed off doing the work. Um, we've had, we've seen that a lot. We left the fire, the police department in this building for fifteen years too long, working out of a room closet. Um, so in this, that's my big push with the EMS is, yes, could we wait a year? We could. It's not gonna get any easier, it's not gonna get any less expensive. Um, it's probably gonna be a lot more expensive, and with the amount of work we've done into it, I just think it's, it's our duty to go that direction, so we don't end up with another town hall or something we pass down the road because we just don't wanna spend it this year. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give another option. Anyone like to speak on the budget? Yes, please. Come to the podium, say your name and address, please.
Hi, you'd like to sing a little song right now?
Sorry.
Yes, I will. Deb Crim, Twenty-four Ross Street, uh, South Berwick. Uh, I was just curious if, uh, I mean, there's so much instability right now from, uh, the, on the federal level. Would that affect any of these numbers that are coming out, say, we, we don't get any funds for whatever, do we have any, uh, are, are, is, are we obligated, I mean, are they obligated to give us anything, and do, is there anything lined up right now that the town?
Federal standpoint, no, there's nothing built for this budget.
That's good. Thank you.
Anyone else, any other figures? Okay, it is seven oh two, I will close the public hearing. And we will go ahead and open the Board of Assessors meeting. Uh, I believe we have one abatement this evening, Chair.
One more?
Yes, sorry.
They do need a motion of both to adjourn.
Thank you. Can I, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn the public hearing at seven oh two PM.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in the second, all those in favor, say aye, Phil?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Ty. All right, uh, now it is seven oh three, and we will open the Board of Assessors meeting. Um, we have Burna, to burn a sharp, our assessing agent here this evening, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Burna, we've only have one.
Yes, one, right, one abatement.
So just to set some context, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the town council is also the Board of Assessors, so we do process the abatement applications. Burna assists us with that, so I'm gonna ask Burna to maybe come up to the podium or just stay there, stay there. Kind of give us the scoop on this initial abatement and, um, we can discuss that question.
Okay. Okay, uh, thank you, good evening, all right, so this is abatement number eight, um, Kent Stovil of PK, I'm sorry, Redford Properties LLC, a filed abatement request, um. He provided some information about comps and things like that, but the bottom line with this particular property, it was new construction as of April first, two thousand twenty-four. Um, so when we went to, uh, when I went to the property to assess it for its level of completion last year, um, we make assumptions on what we think the end product is going to be, and it was not complete. The building itself was only thirty-four percent complete based on a standard checklist that we use. Um, and, and to be fair, you know, the property owner had also made some changes along the lines, so when the when the building was finished, it was a little different than what we expected it to be. Um, so accounting for those differences, I agreed with him that, yeah, I think you were over-assessed last year. So, um, so the thirty-four percent complete on the building was based on a more expensive building. And, um, so if I bring, uh, the data where it needs to be, it actually amounts to an abatement of, um, of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Um, he was looking for two hundred, I don't think two hundred is warranted, I think, um, all in all, if you read the little, um, box right here, if you want me to read that, I can do that for you. Um, that, I'll, I'll start with the second sentence, it's a wood-framed, one-story light industrial building that is new construction, partially built at thirty-four percent. Um, the site work had not yet been completed as of April first last year. And, uh, so the assessment that we ended up with was based on, uh, data that was, um, had changed, basically. Um, and so when I changed that, updated data leads to a value as if finished of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred without paving, there was no paving last year. So if you look at the fact that the land was purchased for two hundred thousand, um, site work and paving came in at a hundred and eighty-six, seven fifty, um, and the building cost, uh, finished amounted to five hundred and ninety thousand, that's a total of nine hundred and seventy-six thousand that he put into the property. So I felt that, um, based on all this new information, that, um, his abatement was a wa, was warranted at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Um, so I did attach a picture of the property as it existed on April one, and as well as the property record card that amounted to the assessment that he's requesting the abatement on five thirty-six-two, and then the corrected um, property record card, it kind of just shows the different, um, da, data points that change. If you have any questions, um, please feel free, but I am recommending an abatement.
Do there any questions for Burna?
She does her homework.
So Burna, I just had a question, um, the assessment records on the original property card and the, um, updated property card, the numbers are the same.
So. Yes, that is true, and the reason why is because this section is, um, the taxable value for that year. So when we issue an abatement, the record doesn't change, so the commitment book is gonna show that original assessed value that we went in on. And then when we do an abatement and you approve it, then it goes to the tax collector and they will draw up a new commitment book page, and that goes into our commitment book to correct the value. But, uh, but so the property record card reflects that on the front, but on the backside, you'll see the dat, data points have changed.
Any other questions for Burna?
And I just had one more.
Oh, you're fine.
No, that's fine. Um, I was just curious, we've talked a lot about how the, um, the building, the abatement request, um, was predominantly because the building was misrepresented with being finished or using different materials, like in the long run or whatever. Um, I did note that, um, there was kind of a, I don't wanna call it a discrepancy, but a question of, um, the land value, where forty percent of the land was deemed unusable or not buildable, was that taken into consideration? And, and it was in, um, the, let me find exactly where that was.
It's, it's not a point that I consider to be valid by the property owner because this is a two-point-one-nine acre parcel that he is fully using, and it does slope down to where the CMP corridor goes by, uh, but he is fully using his lot, and if you look at the zoning for that area, he's, he's fully using it. So there's, um, and he paid two hundred and thou, two hundred thousand dollars for the land. So, and then put another one eighty-six into it. You know, so it's, so the, the value is there, and so that's why I didn't consider his, his argument. He has a lot of points in his abatement application that for me were not relevant, we can talk about it if you want, but, um, but he knew as a taxpayer that the value was high. He just didn't really realize why it was high, and the reason why is because we have the building with clapboard siding at a higher grade, with a different roof material, and then we had to discount it down to thirty-four percent complete, where really it was vinyl siding, asphalt shingle, of, of slightly lower quality grade of the building, then discount it down to thirty-four percent.
And thank you, I'm like, I'm just trying to understand this process because this is literally my least favorite part of being a counselor, because it's, I'm not a, uh, tax assessing expert, I, you know, I don't wanna look at it from a citizen's point of view as opposed from, so I appreciate my, answering my silly question.
Any other questions or anything for Burna? Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion, um, to grant the abatement for, um, thirteen Pumpkin Town Road in South Berwick, um, in the amount of, in the value amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars and for taxes abated to be in the amount of one thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second? All those in favor of granting the abatement for thirteen Pumpkin Town Road, say aye. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. That was our only abatement this evening, correct? Great. Um, thank you so much for coming in.
Yeah, one more item for you.
Oh, yes. Yes.
So, I'm gonna pass out these reports, I, I can um, I turn these into you from time to time, um, a few times throughout the abatement season, I think you've seen them before. Tim just wanted me to make sure that, um, I had a chance to go over them with you if you wanted me to, to explain what it means, um. So, uh, the first page, which is a legal-sized paper, is, um, the list of abatement requests that we've received this year and the status. Okay, so there's two that are still left to be decided upon, so you can see under the approved or denied column, there's two blanks there. Um, so those are the two that, uh, so Mick, uh, Land Development and, uh, James Wall Building on Main Street. So this is a list of, you know, the assessed value, taxpayers' opinion of value, any adjustments that were made, the value and the taxes, the resulting taxes, so that gets totaled up. Um, the next page is our supplementals. So supplementals are if we discover we didn't tax something and we needed to tax something, um, or it could be a treatment penalty. So this is supplemental, this is money that's coming in. Okay, that's a list so far this year of supplementals. And then the last sheet is just a pivot table showing, um, the total and the net taxes.
Question, Burna, on the first page, the list of properties thus far, the two that are in yellow, are those ones that will be coming to us at some point, or?
Possibly, if I do recommend an abatement on those, um, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and I listed the last date or actual date at the Board of Assessors so that I would be making sure that I was timely.
Great, okay, so. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for Burna on this report?
Madam Chair, well, I have the, Burna here, the assessor and agent here. Um, I just wanna bring forth, uh, so that you realize, you know, and you only see her when she does her abatements or these update chats, I see her almost every day, just wanna tell you that although the assess I've worked with, she's the best. Very dedicated, she loves her job, I don't know why. It would make me go open the window and jump, but she's very dedicated. She loves dealing with the public, she loves answering the baby questions, and she just fought on a hundred percent dedicated to her, the commitment of the citizens in this community, doing her right, doing her true job, and she's one of, um, all my, I'm so proud of, and I just want to, while she's here, tell you, you do a great job, thank you.
Thank you, Tim, thank you, Burna.
You make our job easy, thank you.
My pleasure. And anytime anyone has any questions about assessing, you know where to find me, I'm happy to talk assessing.
Thank you, Burna.
Yeah, no, fishing?
All right, I think that takes care of all of our board of assessors, uh, business, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to close the Board of Assessors meeting at seven fourteen PM. Second. Thank you, we have Melissa as a second. All those in favor of closing the Board of Assessors meeting, say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Now, we are into our regular council business, so we have five members present. Um, the town manager is here this evening, um, and our first order of business is approving minutes for March twenty-fifth. Does anyone have any edits to suggest for the minutes for March twenty-fifth? Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes for the town council meeting on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, as written.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the meeting minutes for March twenty-fifth, say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
John?
Aye, motion passes five zero.
Um, up next, we have the treasury warrant. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to sign the treasurer's warrant dated March, sorry, dated April third, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. in the amount of one million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a, in a second. Any discussion?
Um, Tim, I don't know if this can be changed or not, and just for full transparency purposes. There's a, the section that is, uh, the payment to legal is actually a little illegible, and I think it's how it was printed. So if that's going to be the public document, because if you look at it, it looks like it reads forward slash eight, forward slash four, five, zero. And it's supposed to be seven. I don't know if it does it.
Well, well, I
You see it?
Yeah.
So it's, I don't know if we could maybe re-copy that if that's
What line, what line number are you looking at where it says pay? Give me the payday number.
Um, payday number is zero, zero, one, who is Burn, the Burnstein Sure line item. It just, it just looks like it's scanned in a little funny, like the top of the number is bad.
I'm guessing it's seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars, but you're missing the top.
Let me, I got the actual one right here.
Yeah, I think it's seven, eight, seven, four.
Yeah, so Burnstein Sure, it's legal fees, the seven thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. And we will, I will see if they can redo that to make that correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the warrant? Okay, oh, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor of signing the treasurer's warrant, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Uh, up next, we have public comments. Uh, this is a time for anyone from the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda later on. Is there anyone that would like to speak about anything not on the agenda later on? Please come to the podium. State your name and address, please.
Hello, Brad Christo, um, one ninety-five Old Fields Road. Uh, this letter is to the counselor and town manager. Dear counselors, as reported by the Southburg reporter today, the Southburg Sewer District announced at its public meeting Monday that the U S Environmental Protection Agency, the U S E P A withdrew without an explanation their federal grant of three million dollars to complete pump and septic storage upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant. The sewer district has served well the residents of this town. Although I do not live within the district, the sewer treatment plant serves all households in this community on either direct sewer lines or pump septic tanks. This affects us all. Zelda Kenny's articles in the Reporter of March third and April seventh are informative and indirectly raise many questions. As noted, the treatment plant still retains its two thousand eight license issued by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, D E P, yet the sewer district is now in a contundrum. Its license is conditional to standards implemented by the state, which established new and more stringent ones statewide, including those now applied to the district. The state selected the sewer district for this three million federal grant to address present and future operation ostensibly to ensure compliance with these standards. This selection is not arbitrary. It is ironic that the U S E P A is now denying disbursement of approved fund, federal funds for this grant, while it is also the agency required to regulate water quality specifically of concern here, the San Falls River, as directed under the Clean Water Act established in nineteen seventy-two by the Nixon administration. Is the sewer district impossible to town due to these cuts? To do these cut funds hampering treatment plant upgrades now placed? Are they now placing undue burden of potential fines, liability exposure, and of maintaining its license? How can this council and manager work with the sewer district trustees and administrator to address this elimination of federal funds? Does this mean devising new fucking funding mechanisms to solve this issue with town, within the town? Does this mean litigation with the Maine D E P against the U S E P A? It is truly unfortunate citizens of this town will now need to expend time and money to address this unnecessary, indiscriminate, and capricious action by the federal government. Thank you. You have electric on.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Brad. I'm on this topic, yeah.
So, um, thanks, Brad, here. I, I do want to let you know that we are working with the sewer district. There's several avenues. So the first thing we did is when we found out, um, I reached out to Scott, the sewer district, uh, administrator, and, um, asked him if he needed help and I was getting grants. They, two, so two weeks ago, uh, Susan Collins office put out a list for federal earmarks that they're applying for. Gallow, correct me if I miss anything. So at that particular point, I emailed Scott and told him, here's this grant that you can put an earmark, uh, federal earmark in on the Senator Collins office. They were looking for, for earmarks to put in this year. Um, and if he needed to help doing it, DeKalb would certainly help him write it. And we would put it in for him. Um, he emailed me back, said they are already working on that avenue. Um, and another avenue, I reached out to, to all three senators', uh, offices to express our concern about if EPA is doing that requirement, has the town, not, not has the sewer district, which is a separate quasi municipal, but just for exactly your statement as a citizen. And our concern has the administration, how this could affect our town, both environmentally wise and financially. So I have reached out to the, um, offices. I have not heard anything back, but we are working with the sewer district as best we can to help them. And we are monitoring this to, to do something with it. So um, we, we then, and I, again, I've offered to Kalo to the sewer district that they need help finding funds, grants, or anything else. So we're, we're here to be a partner for the sewer district. I do appreciate your input. Um, and, and just I want to remind not only Brad, but any, any of the other citizens. Anytime you have concerns like that, please reach out to me. Um, come in and see me, phone call, email, say, hey, Tim, you know, what's, where are we at? Because I'm as equally concerned as you are. Because if we have to put that bill, um, there, there's a problem with the system. So, you know, they require, they should, they have, we're hoping, one of the statements I heard was they're hoping to get it reinstated in a month or two. Well, I, I, I don't know. I don't know my faith in that. How's that? So we're, we are working with the sewer district, just to let you know. I am, and I'm on it. We're, we're following it. Um, I just didn't make, you know, until you brought it up, maybe where, but we are.
Can we, I just get one clarification. When you said we will put the bill, that is not the town putting the bill. That is right now the sewer district having to put a bill because we are
Right, but I, I don't know where the sewer district gets this right.
No, 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 I understand that. I just want to make sure that the understanding is the town is not saying we put the bill.
No, 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 no.
We
I, I don't, I'm trying, it's right. I'm trying to prevent it from
No, understand.
So, so I'm trying to prevent a disaster and however it ends up on our doorstep. You know, part of us, part of being a good manager with administration and long-term planning. And so the days of long-term planning, apparently went by the last thirty years. So now we're into crisis planning, right? Crisis mode. So we're trying to do what we can to get help for them, but you're right.
No, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that
I don't want to, I don't want to No, okay. So I'm just, we're just trying, we are trying to work with Brad and help them any way we can.
Tim, on this topic, um, could, just given that you guys are already engaged with the sewer district to try to offer resources, can this just be part of your week, bi-weekly update of just kind of what's the, what's the latest we've got on the sewer district?
Yeah. If there's any information, absolutely.
All right, any other, anyone else that would like to speak about anything not on the agenda?
Just ask a question.
Sure.
Um, Suzie Burke in Small Road. Could you just explain what you mean when you say it's a quasi municipal?
So it, it has our exempt status, the town municipal status, but it's not under the town's direction. In other words, I don't manage it. The council doesn't have direct say, but it has its own board of directors and it's its own separate entity, but it's taxed exempt like municipality. It's, it's so they call it quasi municipal because it's municipal services. It's funded by municipal dollars, but it's not run and operated by the town. If that makes sense.
Thanks.
Same way with the water district.
Yeah.
Same way with the water district.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
On, on this same topic, I do, before we run.
No, you, you go ahead first, and then Jeff, you can come up. Let Jeff go first and then
That is it out of line to ask or reach out to the water district and the sewer district to, to just once a year annually be able to have a report out as to, I know they have their own meetings, but I'm not, I've tried, I'm not able to get to those meetings, but like, is it out of the question that, to put it as at least a conversation to offer an annual report out or just a touch base?
They do, they do produce an annual report, but they are not required to give it to us.
We, we get it. I get the annual one from the water district.
It's a, it's a public, they're, they're required to produce it to their customers. So if you're a customer, you can get it. Um, otherwise that's public information, so it should be available for us, but we would not have, because they're quasi municipal, they operate their own board, we would not have any authority to call them to you, to report to you other than if you wanted to do an invite and say, you know, friendly thing, we'll make you a cake and use some ice cream if you want to come tell us about your stuff, but they're, they're their own boards, they, they have their own regulations, they're on domain, municipal code charters. They're their own entity, so they don't have to, they're not required to tell us, but their information is all public to their customers.
Okay, okay. Um, anything else on this, yeah?
Um, Deb Graham again, twenty-four Ross. Wow, pardon my ignorance on this, but you know, let's see, I've been in the house for what, twelve years and, you know, you get a sewer department, uh, bill and you get the water. But in my mind, it's like all, i- i- it's all in the town, you know, and so I just learned something tonight, so it, it, it won't come out of my taxes, but it's still going to come out of my wallet, right? If we have to make up three million dollars.
Right.
So
You have sewer, yes.
Yeah, so I'm, I can't be the only one in the town that thinks that. So I think we're going to all be really surprised on that.
Well, well, they didn't say, so, so they canceled the grant, so they were a long way from when we make it clear. They're not saying that the tax pay has got to fund three million. They got a problem, they got to update their facility, right?
Yeah.
They're trying to find funding. Now that funding stream, as long as I've been a manager, which is among my fourteenth year, has always been through federal, because the federal EPA, Brad said, requires it. They put federal dollars and funded and maintained it. So I'm not sure. So, so the money that the grant was coming from was approved last year, but I'm not sure how they're holding this up. So they were promised this money. They were told they were going to get it. Now they're told they're not. I, I'm not sure. I think it's like a lot of other things coming out of Washington, let's wait. It's all panic, but wait and see for a minute. Let's, let's see where it goes. But I do know that, you know, we are, I have reached out to the congressional aides in Maine, for the state of Maine, um, and I, I hope the sewer district is doing the same. I, I assume they would be.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to speak on this time on the agenda?
Excuse me, Kyle, did I miss anything on my presentation when I was talking? Are we correct on that?
You haven't missed anything, just, um, um, congressional, um, spending requests are due on the fourteenth of this month. Um, and so that's, that's the timeframe that we have to, to put any request in, um, uh, as far as the sewer district. So we are open and willing and able to help out if that, they want to pursue that avenue. Yeah.
Yeah, they, they did say they had someone working on it, so we said, okay, and I did offer to Cal.
Thank you. All right, um, I think we're all set with public comments. Um, we'll move into new business. Uh, new business number one, schedule interview with a potential board member. Uh, we have received an application from Lisa Flynn to join the historic district commission. Um, I will go ahead and make a suggestion that we schedule this interview ahead of our next council meeting on the twenty-second because I believe we already have plans to interview another board member at six fifteen on the twenty-second. So I would go ahead and suggest that we try to schedule Lisa for six o'clock on the twenty-second.
Great.
Thanks. Cool. Uh, all right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, um, schedule an interview for Lisa Flynn um, to join the historic district commission interview held on May April twenty-second at six o'clock P M here at town hall.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Uh, moving on to unfinished business number two. Um, we have an item to vote on revenue and expense budgets for FY twenty-six after the public hearing. Uh, this allows us to then proceed with preparing the necessary documents for our annual town meeting on the twentieth. Um, so the motion here, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-six draft expense budget with an increase of one million, two hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars for a total of eleven million, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and, no. For a total of eleven million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion?
Just for clarity.
Yeah.
It's exactly what, what the motion is. It's, it's to approve that amount.
Yes. Any other expression? Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the table to approve the FY twenty-six draft expense budget, say aye, Jeff.
No.
Melissa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four one. And then we'll do the same thing for our draft revenue budget. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-six draft revenue budget um, with an increase of six hundred and eight thousand for a total of five million, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor of motion, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Okay, um, then our next order of business, number three, voting on our budget warrant for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Um, so this is where the council is voting to approve the final language that'll be included in the warrant. This is the, um, language that the moderator in our annual town meeting reads through. Um, and so the motion, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the town meeting warrant for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six as presented with amendments.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Um, I will point out in our, um, supporting docs, we do have that draft, um, uh, warrant article included in there and the amendments that we referred to, we worked through last e-, uh, at our last council meeting. Um, so you'll notice that I think it's article ten, eleven, and eighteen, um, simply just list, um, town council recommends adoption with a four-one vote, whereas everything else lists town council recommends adoption and assuming a five-zero vote. Um, okay, so we have a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion, um, to approve the town meeting warrant?
Passing question.
Yeah.
Like on, on twelve, see article twelve?
Yeah. Yeah.
It, it doesn't have a recommendation or mention of the vote. I don't know if that's what we want or if that's if you look at eleven, it says, uh, you know, recommends with a four or one vote, and then it says raise appropriate, am I missing it? It said, right, it says recommends, but it doesn't say the vote and it doesn't say, um,
I think it's the town, if, if you read it, it's the town council recommends to raise and appropriate.
They're trying to say, okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's all. It just, it followed the same
It's a little funny.
Typing, so that's all. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss, miss something. There's a lot of work there.
No, I mean, I, I think we're okay. I think it's, it's intended to read town council recommends doing this next action, which is raising an appropriate. Okay, we have a motion on the table to, um, approve town meeting warrant for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six on the table. All of the favor of the motion, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Okay, yeah, our next order of business is to set the town meeting date and time. Um, I've mentioned this a couple, at a couple points this evening already. Um, but our annual town meeting will be held Tuesday, May twentieth, across the street at Central School at six P M. Um, the doors will open at five P M to start voter check-in. Um, I will go ahead and make a motion to set the annual town meeting for Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five at six P M at Central School Gymnasium.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Or any discussion, rather, sorry? All those in favor of motion, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. And our last word of business, downtown revitalization and comprehensive plan committee appointments. Uh, so the council, um, met last Tuesday and Thursday to interview members for our APOC Downtown Revitalization and Comprehensive Plan Committees, um, where we At heart downtown revitalization and comprehensive plan committees, um, where we have created a charge for those individuals, um. And we conducted several interviews last week, um. I have a procedural question, can I lump these all in one motion, or do we need individual motions for each person?
No, you should do them all.
Yeah.
Yep. It was all you, what is it?
Well, it's two different committees, so if you're gonna do that, you gotta.
Yeah, I was gonna do one committee at a time.
Yeah, yeah, do one committee at a time, but you're. So I don't have, I don't have a sheet.
I got, I've got all the names, I just wanted to know if I can do one motion to say, put all these people on downtown revitalization, or do we need to process each person individually?
No, so you can read for the individual committee, but, but you have to, you'll have to put their name. And their.
Term.
Term, so, so you can read Lisa Flynn. Through twenty twenty five, blah, 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 Diane Musso through twenty six, so you just have to read each one and their term.
Okay. Okay, um, so this is, um, both of these committees are ad hoc committees, um, I think. We can kind of discuss in the interviews, at, at minimum, have a year to start, so I was gonna suggest that we. Uh, point everyone to the individual committees with a term ending March, or sorry, April thirtieth, twenty twenty six, end of April next year. That's what for everybody?
Yeah, did you want to do with the other board securities, where they all expire June thirtieth of the following year?
Just know it all, so they're all group insurance for reappointment if needed.
DeCarlo, do you have any thoughts on that? Think that makes sense, yeah. Okay, so then, scratch that, let's say, let's appoint these individuals to these terms, uh, or sorry, to these committees with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. To align with our other boards, and then we can process them, it's good, it's not good, okay, um. All right, I will go ahead first, we'll do the comprehensive plan committee, um, so for the comprehensive plan, we interviewed Maya Srinivasan and Laura Eaton. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint both Maya Srinivasan and Laura Eaton to the comprehensive plan committee with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Thank you, motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero, thank you to Maya and Laura for your willingness to serve South Borough. And then next we have the downtown revitalization committee, um, and I will go ahead and make a motion to appoint Tamara Steinhour, Edward Flanagan. Dan Boyle and Roxanne Coolen to the downtown revitalization committee with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of appointing those individuals to the downtown revitalization committee, say aye, Jeff.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero, Tamara, Ed, Dan and Roxanne, thank you. Um, DeCarlo, I'm sure we'll be in touch in coming weeks, um, with next steps for that. And I think that takes care of all of our regular council business, I'll pass over to Tim for the town entries prayer.
All right, I'm just gonna hit the highlight, because you're all we wanted tonight, there's a lot on here. Highway, highway been doing road patching and true town playground cleanup. Um, all the snow equipment was serviced and put away for the summer, and J Stinger's across, I'm not gonna figure it out. Police department, five arrests, three accidents, under eight traffic stops. Fire department had twelve calls in the last two weeks, hundred and twenty four to date. Uh, they went out to Wisconsin last week and did the final inspection on the new truck. So it's passed inspection, being shipped to Massachusetts for delivery, should be here, excuse me, at the end of the month. Code enforcement, nineteen building permits, four plumbing permits, thirty one inspections, sixteen certificates of occupancy, three violations. Economic development, uh, applications been received for and planning for Belmont Road, um. No application received for an eleven lot subdivision. Side grant has been approved by the side grant committee for downtown business hidden greens. Uh, Shu Town Park is scheduled for cleanup on four twenty six, nine to twelve, Mountain Health. And design workshop scheduled for five nineteen and five to seven, come share your ideas for the future of Shu Town Park, that's the Shu Town Park, correct?
Right.
Okay? Uh, library, they had an author visit with main domain. They had a main author visit, Monica Wood, that had a hundred and six attendees. Um, mock report, the items borrowed was two thousand, six hundred and eight. And her library loans outgoing was a hundred and thirty eight, and to library loans incoming, three hundred and twenty eight. Two thousand, three hundred and two people came through the door, um, they notched. Computer uses were a hundred and twenty four, twenty nine programs, and a total of three hundred and thirty two attendees. Recreation, two new programs at, at the access school enrichment program offerings. Discovery Squad and Kids Art Studio, some of camp registration started last week and is already half full. Seniors started a new seat exercise class in January, and it continues to be a huge success, bringing in. Anywhere from sixteen to twenty four participants weekly. Easter dinner celebration is gonna be on Wednesday, four sixteen, with a rose and two thorns for entertainment, followed by hand dinner. I can't elaborate, I don't know what it is. Uh, assessing, started review of personal property de- declarations. And started review of exempt property applications, which is, um, churches, patrones, passengers, so forth. Town clerk has eight hundred and forty two sets of plates have arrived in our office, gearing up for May first, for, these are the new design plates, correct? Um, the question and answer fact sheet can be found on clerk's page on the motor vehicles. Um, finance and HR, three O web, we're going to three O web, they've been testing all week, as opposed to a high core. Program that's on our server, we're gonna be going to, and, and everybody else is moving there, all, all the communities, we're gonna go live on Friday, four eleven. Um, delinquent tax letters will be mailed on a Monday, and the elevator pass, know the yearly inspection after a hiccup. Under administration, uh. I've been working with, uh, Paul Shoemaker, DeCalo, and S U P D C and Jen. On the railroad avenue, uh, update, we, we got a grant for a study. For a repurpose study to see, we can present to you what that may be able to be used for once it gets cleaned up. Um, we interviewed an applicant to do a communication study, she is. From, uh, she worked for Nessun, radios, TV, did thirty years, she's a. You know, reporter kind of person, she does the audit, um, she originally given us a quote for around four thousand, Paul Shoemaker got us her information. Other towns, we used her for this audit, tells us. Basically, she looks at everything we're doing, email, Facebook, pay, uh, you know, our, all our, uh. Websites, all that stuff, and tells us where we're lacking, how we can better promote our community. So, we negotiated down twenty five hundred dollars, I had that in my budget, so we're gonna get that assessment report. Uh, we met with the superintendent, discussed the budget formulas for the school, and that was very educating. Um, and a big piece on that, and I wanna make sure the public hears and understands. So there's two pieces of that, of the school budget, it's school enrollment, kids enrollment in the school, that's one section of it. And the other one is all the other costs, and it's based on multiple factors, including town valuation, okay? So, when they take that town valuation, correct me if I misspelled, if I misspeak. And they add that portion into our value, our town has been growing over the years, correct? So they just take it from year to year, like it grows here, what did we do next year, so forth. Well, Elliot's has been stable, so Elliot's is, they're, they're, they haven't suffered many growth rehab, they haven't had all that. So their school payment in turn kind of goes down, ours is going up because our valuation is going up, so when I got here. Our valuation was around eight hundred million, then a year or two later was nine hundred million. This year it's over a billion dollars. So as our valuation goes up by the school formula. Our payment is increased, there's nothing we can do to the way the formula is written, it would have, we would have to change the formula. So, by doing and looking, even though school's budget came in at two point nine nine percent. Even if the school budget came in at zero percent, there would still be an increase in South Borough's. Budget for the school because of the way our valuation has gone up.
And we contribute more students.
And we, then, then on the other side, we contribute more students, so I wanna make it that. Clear, because we spent a long time working with them on that. Downtown side committee meeting to discuss the application, met with the principal at Central School. Discuss the needs of the town meeting with Tanya and Jen, myself went over. Um, I'm working on, hopefully I'll have the owners representative contract stuff for us for that piece for next meeting for you. Uh, met with main GDP at transfer station. To get a licensing update, because our license needs to be updated, it's kind of like out of. Hasn't been updated in a while. Hasn't been updated, I've been here and I'd like to have it updated, so we met, find out what we need to do. And we're working on that, um, so a little back. Any questions on that part of my report?
Yes, I have a quick question about the, uh. I can't remember what you called, that passing auditor, marketing auditor.
The communications.
Communication.
Communication person, yeah.
Kind of marketing, um, I know obviously I haven't happened yet, but is there the, an idea of what? I wanna say, like what is the plan for, actually I'll come up with some suggestions, I assume, and then is there any money set aside? To kind of take care of any of that stuff, or is that something that we would have to look at down the road?
So I did put it in the issue's budget, but it's one of the items we got stopped at a time.
Okay.
So I had already planned moving ahead, how the, you know, plan development was. To get a communications director of the towns, and we back up a little bit, in October last year, the county, the York County Managers Association. Pick this agenda item as something for us to all look into. So, we all decided that one of the critical roles that we're missing this day and age. Where everything is by social media, is communications for our constituents, everybody says, oh, we're not transparent, we're not transparent. We have a, you know, we have a web page, we have a Facebook page, we. We, we post things at the transfer, so we do, you know, we have a newsletter, do all these things. Is it enough, is it not enough, are we doing it right, are we doing it wrong, are we missing something? So, we're gonna get this communications, uh, audit, who hopefully can guide us to say. Here are some things that you should, could and should do better, better transparency, communication to your citizen. I'll give that to you, next year we'll look at the budget, see if there's room in the budget, if that's something we can afford or not. Don't know, but eight towns in York County have hired full-time communication person, maybe, and that's the problem, so, you know. On several times, some borough reporters will send us questions, and it's in an effort to try to get back them, but. We're all busy doing other things, I don't just, I'm not just a town manager, I'm the road commissioner, tax, I'm the, you know, I'm the, uh, the, the tax collector. Uh, I do other, you know, I do other things, agendas, we all do multiple roles, so sometimes. The, the South Borough reporter will send us that, and we, we don't have time to look it up, or we, we, you know, it's not at the top of our priority. It certainly wouldn't be if somebody was there full-time, but the clerk doesn't have time to do it, I don't have time to do it, so. We're gonna get an audit, and present to the council to say, here's how we should move over.
Um, I just heard, um, you, earlier on, you were talking about highway, um, saw Jay here. He walked out, all right, how's the truck doing from the accident from last meeting?
Yeah, it's five thousand, five thousand all the damages, and a thousand all deductible. Um, we had to argue with the insurance company for the, for the hourly rate of labor, because they didn't wanna pay what we had, so. Um, what we got, um, but they're ordering, they ordered the parts. It'll be in sometime in mid-May, and truck will go in for a week, and have the new cab corners put on, and body, the rear body fixed, and then so.
Thanks.
Do you have any comments?
I do.
Continue.
Okay.
Unless anyone's.
Punker in, anybody got any other question? I wanna talk to you about something very special near the end of my heart, very close, right, here, right, what I said, it's LD six oh nine. LD six oh nine is the supplemental budget that was passed by the legislature a couple weeks ago. I thought, did you attend that?
I was present, yes.
You, you were present, so you saw that pass, living tall, right? Okay. That was the governor's budget in its entirety, the way she crafted it, they sent it there, and this has done nothing to the politics, it's not Republican based or. The, uh, Democratic based or any other base, this is what's happening right now, that's. So, that will go into effect, that's a supplemental budget, has multiple monies to it, we go into effect July first, if nothing else happened. A group of ex legislators and current legislators have decided to seek a people's petition. They'll need about sixty seven thousand signatures by, so the secretary of state need to petition out by April eighth. And then that petition, they need about sixty seven thousand signatures by July, uh, June nineteenth. So if they get the signatures, and the secretary of state certifies those signatures and they pass. That stops the supplemental budget from being implemented as it sits. That's it, it's done, there's no funding, no state funding. Um, we don't know what that necessarily means, MMA has told us that. Several things could happen, um, including the state to close down. And if state closed down till, it would have to be closed till the next vote on that LD six oh nine, which would not come till November. So, that means nothing would happen, I did ask the clerk to check with Shanna Bellows about. Her office and how that would have an effect on her office, and what did she reply to in that email roughly?
She said at this time, there's could be no effect, but there might be a delay in getting supplies from motor vehicles, so that might come to an end. We can do it as much as I have supplies, if, if worst case.
Thank you, so it would have to go to November, the voters within either pass it or deny it, if the bet. Voters pass it, then it becomes effective, and the supplemental budget goes into effect, if the voters deny it. Um, then the legislature has to stop building a supplemental budget all over, getting a statement could be closed down. So, right now, from MMA legal and eight to four, who's our representative in MMA, she said. There are six other legislative bills on the table that have numbers to them, that. Have supplemental budgets to them, that are, that they have a choice to pick from, hopefully pass one of those. Before this all comes to something happening. Lots of things could happen, but I'm just appraising you as to, uh, I spent a lot of time on this this past week, and I'm hoping that. Whenever, uh. Representative Roberts comes out of session, I don't know when that would be, but maybe she can come down and spreads, give us. Talk to us, we'll talk to you a little bit more about it, I'm only getting from my pieces of it. I do know that, you know, there's a lot of hope that the legislatures will pass. A hundred and fifty eight, a hundred and fifty six of them will get together and pass one of the other supplemental bills.
So I think on that update, the most, I wanna confirm, like the most obvious thing, I think to me, and in the event that that initiative is successful. Um, we have allocated in our revenue budget that we literally just voted on to approve. One point two seven five million dollars coming from state revenue sharing, so that would potentially be. Not happening.
Paused.
Paused.
That's not, not, not paid, delayed, so, so we get revenue every month, or we get a revenue check every month. That would, if the states close, they just can't, they would send it to us, that would just be, that would just be, but I did ask eight, I said, would we potentially. Get that money later on, she said, well, yes, but if the states close, then I'm getting any revenue in. So you're gonna have a revenue shortfall at some point, so. Nobody knows, a lot of one knows, but I just wanna bring, I, as I told you, um, I watched this stuff, I don't know if any of you have heard of it, any of this stuff happening. Or have seen anything, I don't, I don't know if any of you can add any more to this than what I have.
So I watched it too, I, I, I don't have anything to add.
I just, I just wanna make sure you realize that, you know, there are forces beyond us that we have to deal with. So, with that said, you know, I said, would DOT be paid, and they, they said. Uh, there, there's a lot of stuff in transition, they don't have answers yet. One thing I wanna make it clear is that the town of South Borough is solvent, we have money, it would not have any other than, yes, affecting revenue. As far as the rest of the stuff we do, we're okay, we'll be okay, we'll continue on day to day, the roads are open. People's jobs will be, you know, stuff will be paid, so, no matter what happens at that level, we're solvent here. Matter of chat, it's all out.
Okay, thank you, um, we are now at council member comments, anyone wanna go first? Bill.
Yep. Uh, I just want to, um, do a shout out to Nikki Drake and everybody at the department, I've seen a lot of, all the work that they're doing for the. Uh, especially those after school programs, you mentioned two of them, and that's on top of all the other ones that they do in connection with the schools, um. It's awesome to see, I know the kids really love it, so I just wanna, uh, give a go to that, the whole department.
Thank you.
I can't talk, Tim's ending, so I'm good for the night. I don't have anything, thank you.
I received an email from, uh, Daniel Kenny, um, who was looking to be considered for the downtown revitalization implementation committee, um, unfortunately, he goofed up his schedule, um, when the original interview was rescheduled. And he's hoping that this doesn't disqualify him from the consideration from the committee. So, maybe, um, if the council would agree to, maybe at the next meeting, schedule another interview um, with him for appointment consideration, that would be fantastic.
I was gonna suggest, just cause I'm, at our next council meeting, we've already got six o'clock, six fifteen meeting, or interviews, if everyone could come in at like five forty-five, we could just kind of bang them all out at the beginning, with Dan Kenny can join us then. So, can you hear five forty-five?
Sure.
Okay. Let's just go ahead and make them, I'll make a motion that we reschedule an interview with Dan Kenny for the downtown revitalization committee on April twenty-second at five forty-five. Thank you, we have a motion and a second, all of the favors, aye, Jeff? Melissa?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I also just wanted to, um, give a reminder that the Easter egg con touch a truck has been rescheduled from Saturday, April twelfth, and is now April nineteenth due to pending inclement weather that is supposed to come in. Not that we trust a forecast, but there you go. Um, and finally, I just wanted to wish my mom a very happy birthday today. You don't look a day over forty-nine, but it's kind of creepy, cause that's how old I am.
Love you, Mom. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Um, I don't have any, anything, any comments, but, um, question, I'm just wondering do we have a sense of when we're gonna be meeting to do the interviews for the construction manager position? We're just very quickly entering into late spring, I have a senior who's graduating, and all the events that
I'll, I'll call tomorrow and try to get more.
Just to think about setting aside time so we can schedule.
Yep, I'll call tomorrow to see what I can find out.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Definitely had, um,
Adam, Sharon, who are you, Sharon?
Second, all those in favor, say aye. Thank you, everyone.